See, it's seven o'clock. The meeting is called to order. We can say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call. Lannion.
Brandon.
Preya.
Here.
Jenkins. Van Olsberg.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Hanson.
I would make a motion to excuse both Jenkins and Hanson this evening.
Second.
Sorry, just a minute. On favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, now we have approval of the agenda.
And make the motion to approve the agenda as submitted before.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, at this time, it's time for audience participation. Anyone wishes to make any comments on non-agenda items? That would be the time. Okay.
Well, I think I have good news. Kind of surprised me. Anyway, we've been talking about lights for the trail over there. Safe walkway at school touches all kinds of bases. There's a solar light that also has a motion detector. So it would light up. We don't know exactly how many we need. I got approval from Home Depot for a grant of $3,400, which would be more than enough. Took three days to get the approval. I don't know if you ever heard of such a thing, but in five days total to actually get like a credit card. It's a gift card. I will actually order the first four tomorrow unless you all are against doing that. Now, we could probably put them up. I don't know if you'd want the city to put them up, but that's something we can talk about. But I want to get a couple so you can actually see them and, you know, look at them before we went all in. Well, we've got time. It'd be nice if we could get it done before school starts after Christmas, but that depends on everybody else. But, you know, I've known a little bit about grants, but I've never got approval in three days.
Must be that tiny, or?
Well, the lady there, Kate Hannah, she's the one I got the previous grant for toy laptops. And she is in close communication with the corporate lady that gives final approval of all these. And because it was a small one, I think that also helped because she told me that the funds are getting a little bit low. And so I need some batteries. I got a bunch of battery-powered hand tools before, but those batteries don't last long, so I need some batteries. So we'll be able to take care of that. So we could talk about whether or not, you know, we have an idea of how we can do it, but that's open for discussion and again, time to do it.
That's great. And you're talking about to stretch all the way through the lower part.
Well, I've got enough.
Yep.
But, you know, there's no cord between them.
Yeah, yeah.
They're around about $250 each, this light. So it's, you don't find them in the store, so we have to order them.
Sounds awesome.
Yes, my goodness.
That's good news.
Yeah, no kidding, oh yeah.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other audience participation? All right.
Okay, sorry. Good evening. My name is Adam Simeon. I'm the superintendent. I have the schools here. I like the managing laptops. That's new. I just wanted to okay a couple things. First, we had a, we continue to really appreciate the support of the Williamson Police Department. We had a very successful emergency drill today at our middle school. And of course, it's not just the drill that makes you successful. It's all the preparation leading up to that and coordination with law enforcement and other first responders. But it went really well. We even had one of our SROs come in on his day off. Didn't have to be there, but he wanted to be there to observe and make sure he was aware of everything that was going on and how the drill went. So we continue to be greatly appreciative. I know there's limited resources, but the prioritization of the schools and keeping our staff and students safe is noticed and appreciated across the board. And I don't want to get out in front of this, but I do want to, I heard that there might be some discussion at a future council meeting about limiting the left-hand turns on Riverside and Highland. As you might, it doesn't look like I might be able to attend those meetings, so I just wanted to make sure that I got here at some point and was able to say that, you know, if that does come for potential discussion. As you know, I've been here before for different presentations and comments, and we would strongly support limiting at certain times of day left-hand turns for a number of reasons, including just traffic flow, but more importantly, the potential injury to students crossing when you only have one crossing guard out there at the cross-sit intersection. I try to get out there as much as I can to help, but I've been hit twice by cars turning left, and I'm 6'5", 240. Hit me. Imagine what a six-year-old would be experiencing. So the good news is, long-term, there are some plans to address that permanently. I anticipate being back in front of the council in the next couple of months to explain a little bit more detail about what those are. So there is a plan to have a permanent fix to make that a safe and secure and efficient way of getting kids to and from school. But if the council were to entertain that conversation down the road, again, we would be in support of that because it is important security, safety, ownership. So that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Adam.
Any other audience participation at this time? All right, then we'll go to the election of the mayor and mayor pro temp. Do I have any motions?
Well, I'll just say that if you guys still like me, I'd be more than happy to sit in this seat for another year. And I think Brandon's done a fantastic job as mayor pro temp. And I think, you know, working with John, all of us have that ability, and it seems like we've had a good year.
Is this a package deal or do we have to do it one at a time?
One at a time, so.
I'll kind of make a motion to nominate mayor Joe Rock. What is my term with this being?
Oh my gosh, I think it's my eighth.
Eighth term, congratulations.
Support.
All right, there's a motion and support to elect Kenny Gilroy as mayor. I'll do a roll call. Scott Van Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Preya?
Yes.
And now I would thank you, Bart, for bringing that over. And now I would entertain a motion for Mayor Pro Temp.
I'd make a motion to nominate Brandon Lannion as Mayor Pro Temp.
Thank you so much. Bart, can I have a roll call for that?
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Preya?
Yes.
Van Olsberg?
Yes.
All right. See, that's why I always make the approval of the agenda or something because it's the one motion I get to make for you. All right, now we're moving along on our agenda. We have our council meeting minutes of November 27, 2023. I'm looking for approval unless there's changes that need to be noted.
Proof is submitted.
Thank you so much. Do I support? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brandon, you had the opportunity to review our council panel this evening.
I did. It seems rather large, but mostly because of the Putnam Project, which is going around, going along swimming lane. So I'll give that a little tidbit. But other than that, nothing that's out of the ordinary. So I would make a motion to approve checks 77183 through 77207 and ACH 641 through 652 for a grant total of $389,511.59.
Thank you so much. Did anybody have any questions regarding the council panel this evening? That's pretty clear cut. Do I have support? Or Dan?
I'll second my motion.
All right, thank you so much. If there's no further discussion, Barbara, will you call the roll?
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Preya?
Yes.
Van Olsberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Moving along to our action items this evening. We have our residential cross-connection program. I'm going to turn that over to our city manager down here.
Thank you, Members of Council. A little under the weather, so I'm going to try and talk really fast. So we've had a cross-connection program for commercial and institutional entities for a number of years. This is something that is required by Eagle through the state of Michigan. Recent policy changes have really, further demands, I guess you'd say, on water systems everywhere. And so in order to stay in compliance with Eagle, we have to move also into the residential cross-connection program. And so what will happen, much like with the commercial, industrial, or institutional, HydroCorp will run the program for us. They do a very good job. They do this in a number of communities across the state. Their goal is to get about 300 residential units per year for the two years of the contract, 300 each year. So happy to answer any questions you may have. As I said, their scope is very comprehensive. They will do the, we'll assist them with our social media and also our messaging, but they will reach out to homeowners on the advertising side and also coordinate appointments, and their staff will do the actual inspections. And then what would happen, if there was a fix that was necessary, they would identify what that is or what that would be, and then the homeowner would give guidance on how to become into compliance.
Yes, Dan?
Question. So we've been working with HydroCorp for a number of years, and I know we've had a policy on how they would handle the residential cross-connection inspections. Is that, is this just a ramping up of that, or?
Yeah, that's correct. And our latest visit from Eagle, annually, the enforcement staff comes out, your compliance staff, because we're not under any enforcement action. But that was part of their letter that moving forward, we're going to have to start the residential program. We were able to forestall that for a while, but it's time for us to join that program, learn to comply.
Will we have HydroCorp come to either a work session or a council meeting just to kind of give us that overview of how that's going to work when they're checking the residential?
Sure.
Okay, great. I think that'd be fantastic because it is going to be moving into the residential district, and I think that's something that we want to be as transparent as possible. All right. Any other questions for, yes, Scott?
Testing now, but every once in a while someone calls my house and wants to get the water tested.
Yep.
But that's not this. Is there something else?
It's part of the overall compliance for having a usable water system, but this is more the actual physical connection to make sure that you don't have any, that it comes in particular play when you have the irrigation system, to make sure that your irrigation system doesn't backflow into your residential water and then back into the system at large. So it's related, but it's different parts of the same machine.
Any other questions for John? We have the suggested motion on memo. If somebody would like to bring it forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the cross-connection professional service agreement with HydroCorp for $28,242 annually for a contract total of $56,484 over a two-year period.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Scott. If there's no further discussion, Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
Preya?
Yes.
Van Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
All right, next we have our 2024 non-union wage and benefit changes. And again, I'm going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hanefen.
Thank you, Members of Council. So annually, the city council is presented with any benefit changes for non-union employees at the last meeting of the calendar year. Just to give some of the background information, we did make some wage adjustments for the Capitol City Labor Program, which represents our police department in order to enhance our recruitment. I'm pleased to say that that obviously worked because we're heading back towards full staffing with our two in the academy. We did settle our agreement, our three-year agreement with ASME. We settled the agreement earlier or late this summer when we had the contract finalized in the last month or so. So these changes are in line with those. There's not the hour increase that the police department received. There is a 5% increase for wages. There are changes in longevity. There is the ability to sell back vacation, and there's the addition of one floating holiday in lieu of some of the federal holidays that the city employees don't get that many traditional governments or schools get. So we're recommending approval of these changes. Just to give you an idea of the scope, we do have two full-time, non-union positions that we are not going to fill. And the net savings for that is about $175,000 annually. But the benefit changes we're asking to approve tonight are just shy of $40,000. So there's actually a net decrease to the overall staffing budget of about $130,000. Happy to answer any questions you may have, but that's what's in front of you right now.
Great, thank you. Anyone have any questions for John? I'm looking for that requested action.
I'm making motion to approve benefit changes for non-union city employees effective January 1, 2024.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for your support. If there's no other discussion, Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Lannion?
Yes.
Preya?
Yes.
Van Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Our last action item for the evening is consideration on our 2024 city council meeting dates and times. That is on page 90 of our packet. And it looks like we do have two dates that are going to be offset from what our normal dates would be. One is because of election activities. The other is because of Memorial Day. So we have the dates in front of us. If somebody would like to make the motion to accept that calendar. Yes, John? Sorry.
On February 26, that is the fourth Monday in February.
Yeah.
We will have to have that at a different location because of the new election laws, which requires nine days in-person voting. This will be election central. And so we'll find an appropriate place for us to be. It'll likely be at Nisa, or at least I have some other ideas, so. But that's really the only specific change. I will point out our first meeting, the new year, falls on a very special day. It is Elvis's birthday. It's also my birthday, which I was like, oh, that's awesome.
We have peanut butter banana sandwiches?
Well, we may.
Are you going to dress as Elvis?
Yeah, that would be better.
No more than, no more than I normally do.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 meeting dates as submitted.
Thank you so much. Brandon, do I support? All right, thank you, Paul. That was Scott and Tom that supported. If there's no further discussion on those dates, Barbara, will you call the roll, please?
Preya?
Yes.
Van Olsberg? Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lannion?
Yes.
All right, that includes our action items for this evening. We are going to move into our discussion items. We have three different topics. The first is our Williamson Community Schools correspondence. I'm going to turn that over to John Hanefen, our city manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Gilroy, Members of Council. So we did receive a letter from the Williamson Community Schools urging us to consider housing in the city and in the region. We did discuss this item at our joint work session with Williamson Township. And I've reported on this before. Would have liked to have a more fulsome discussion, I guess, at that meeting, and perhaps we can have it at a future meeting. But we do have members of the school board here. I know one of the members would like to read the letter. I think that's appropriate to do that at this point, and then we would have discussion from council.
Absolutely. So if you'd like to come forward, if you could just state your name, your position on the school board, and that would be great.
Governor, trustee of the school board.
Thank you, Deborah.
And I just want to share the letter. It's lengthy, so hang with me. Dear Williamson City Council members and also Williamson Township trustees, we, the Williamson Community Schools Board of Education, are writing to convey the urgent need for additional housing inventory in Williamson. As you are aware, representatives of Williamson Community Schools, WCS, have advocated for many years to add homes. As outlined in those presentations and discussions, data strongly support the need for immediate attention to the housing requirements of our community. Despite the conclusiveness of data, no noticeable progress has been made, even as the communities around us continue to strategically add inventory. We have also observed that despite the hardships created by our housing shortage, exploring solutions to address the situation is not a priority. It is incumbent that both the city of Williamson and Williamson Township take immediate steps to create the conditions for a sustainable population for the community and a consistent student enrollment base for the school district. Williamson Community Schools faced an enrollment and fiscal crisis from approximately 2010 to 2016. The factors impacting that crisis included Michigan's unique economic challenges and the national recession. State funding cuts and families moving out of the area to seek employment resulted in dire financial circumstances for the district. To recover, WCS aggressively marketed the strong academic attributes and co-curricular programs, SAMAS, with the district's longstanding record of excellence. Marketing the district was and continues to be a success. An influx of students have enrolled seeking enhanced educational opportunities. In fact, in 2019, WCS reported its largest student enrollment since 2007. A part of the marketing plan, which was communicated to the city and the township, was the anticipation that both entities would add housing inventory so district enrollment would become consistent and sustainable. Unfortunately, the city and township have not expanded housing options or availability. Williamson Community Schools is now reliant on unpredictable School of Choice, SOC, and non-resident enrollment to maintain our quality academic and co-curricular programs. The combination of a highly rated, desirable school district and a decade of inaction on housing construction has resulted in skyrocketing home prices. According to data published by Zillow in July of 2023, Williamson ranks 41st in Michigan for the highest housing price increase over the past five years. The consequence of a 43.7% increase during this period is a price of $296,405 for a typical home. It is virtually unobtainable for most young families and working professionals to purchase a house in Williamson. The district not only loses students, but also exceptional teaching candidates. Even with record salary increases over the past several school years, many educators cannot afford to reside in or commute to Williamson. As of November 2022, only 39% of the professional staff working for WCS resided in the district. Furthermore, many children of faculty who live outside the district cannot attend WCS. The costs and logistical challenges of commuting make it impossible for their attendance. Given the highly competitive nature of the current educational job market, the lack of housing has a profound negative impact on the district's ability to recruit and retain outstanding educators. School of Choice and non-resident enrollment create the impression that the district, and in turn, the community as a whole, has a strong economic foundation. It does not. The residential population of the school district is in steep decline. It is imperative that our local governments take immediate action. This is not a debate over rampant pro-growth versus maintaining the rural environment. It's about providing the resources necessary to sustain current expectations and quality of life in Williamson. Remedy, the housing shortage. The Williamson Community Schools Board of Education respectfully requests housing become the foremost priority of the city and the township and that the necessary proactive steps be taken to solve the serious, immediate, and long-term issue. The board is eager and willing to problem-solve and collaborate with the city, township, and community members. We must find mutually agreeable housing solutions to ensure the ongoing success of our school district and the entire Williamson community. And the entire school board has signed the letter, and we expect to have a meeting with all of the entities. We will be inviting you sometime after the holidays.
Great. All right. Thanks so much for taking the time to ring that. John, I'll go ahead and pop this back to you. Any comments?
Yeah, thank you. No, as I mentioned earlier, I mean, we had discussed this in the two years that I've been here, in the two joint meetings we've had with Williamson Township. We've talked about housing, talked about housing a little bit. We talked about it with our joint work session with the city council and planning commission. And when we move into our strategic planning in February, we'll make sure that we have a comprehensive packet of information. And those are public, most certainly, share that with the school board, the data sets that we're working from. Because when we talked about, now, just to get a little bit into the, I don't want to get too far in the weeds with data because, you know, you can use data to say whatever story you want on. But, you know, according to the county, we did grow at about 0.8% during the past 10 years. That's just in the city limit. And that we did grow at 4.1%, which is similar to the tri-county region. And that's from a county study. So the other thing that we did talk about in our joint session with planning is the availability of housing units. We have about 100 housing parcels that are ready and able to zone appropriately, and utilities are there for that kind of development. So, but we need to, as staff, we'll put together a package for all of you to discuss, and that will be a priority item. And we, frankly, was on our strategic planning session of last year. Just on the anecdotal, I have a meeting later this week to talk with a housing developer about a piece of property on Rowley that's flipping ends, and they're interested in doing housing development there. There's another 90 or 100 or so units that are imminent. It's really probably just a question of the market forces taking place and folks are interested in developing housing again, so.
I mean, I've been sitting at this table now for almost nine years and now going on eight years as mayor. And this isn't a discussion that is not unfamiliar to us. And I know John and I have met with Adam several occasions. I know that we've had our joint township work sessions. So, you know, we are aware of it. I'll open up comments for my council members, and I'm going to go to Brandon.
So, yeah, so my only comment is that, you know, I read and heard the allegations in the letter that, you know, we don't take this seriously and we don't care. But as John has mentioned, we have 100 plots that are available and open to use. So if there are suggestions, which were not in the letter, that the school board or frankly, any citizen has that we can do better on, I'm more than happy to hear that. What we could do to increase the availability of housing, we have the land available, it's just not being developed. Again, like if I had money, I'd develop myself, but, you know, I don't. So I'm open to any kind of recommendations that anyone has on how we would actually push the policy forward and not just accuse the township and the city of not doing anything.
Any other comments, Paul?
So my only comment is kind of building off of Brandon's is that we see the need and we recognize the need. And we definitely are not standing in the way of developers, but we can't force them to come in and develop. You know, the cost of new home construction now is much more than it used to be. So, I mean, if a developer comes in, we've even talked about in our meetings that, you know, if there's zoning appeals that need to happen and different things, we're willing to work with developers to make that happen. We just don't have a ton of people banging on the door, so. For as much as the city can do, we're doing our part to make it possible. So like Brandon said, if we have suggestions as to way we can draw developers in that want to develop in this area, we'd be more willing to listen to those.
Yep, I'm going to go to, sorry, Dan first, and then Scott.
So I don't think there's anyone up here that doesn't want to see the school successful and is trying to do anything to, you know, stifle that. My wife teaches at the schools. I've got three boys in the schools. Three of the people up here came through Williamson and have lived here our entire lives. The idea that we're ignoring pleas from the school district is very frustrating and aggravating to me. Like John said, we discussed, he came from a meeting with, I don't know if it was the school's finance committee or one of their committees, to a joint meeting of the council and the Planning Commission, where we looked at our entire zoning and how much zoned residential open properties we have and what do we need to do to change it. We have like 110 zoned residential parcels. We're not developers. We're not going to buy that and build the homes. We can't do that. We don't have the money to do that. We don't have the desire to do that. I went back and I watched the school board meeting on YouTube where this was discussed. And one of the things that was brought up there was the cost of a house in Williamson right now being around $300,000. But then it was also advocated that, and discussed, the Mayberry Home subdivision that's being built at Haslam. Well, if you drive by there, that subdivision starts at $300,000. Well, if it's not, the $300,000 mark isn't viable, well then, how is that going to help? It didn't make any sense.
And we're talking about that's the lower end of...
Yeah, and that's the lower end. You know, the fact that your staff can't purchase a home here. We lived in an apartment for three years before we were able to purchase a home. You know, it, this, you know, we all want to see the school successful, but we have, the other thing that frustrated I'm just going to say is the idea that the only reason people moved to Williamson is because of the schools was put forward in that meeting. And as someone that works very hard in this community in a lot of different aspects, that I found that very frustrating as well. We have great schools. We're all proud of our schools. And we want to see them successful. But we have a great community that surrounds those schools, that have helped those schools become successful.
Scott?
Yeah, what I'm perceiving from the letters is that we need to up our game. And I think we need to take this letter seriously. And so I think maybe, is it possible to have a subcommittee to look at this issue and to bring in ideas from the school board and seek out other ideas and bring back to the council?
John, I mean, we could talk about that after the first of the year if we wanted to develop something like that. Typically, our subcommittees, because I've had a couple of those that we've put into place early on in my mayoralship. They're a two-year with an intentional goal in mind. So, I mean, that's definitely something we could talk about as we go through our strategic planning. And I absolutely agree, Scott. One thing I will say is that we are definitely empathetic. All of us, I mean, if we all raise our hands here, we've either gone to school here in Williamson. We've raised children that have gone to school here in Williamson. We're generational families, most of us that sit here at this table. So we understand that Williamson and school districts are great, but I want to emphasize what Dan just said. It's the community that makes up Williamson and then the school within it. We have a wonderful community. And we're up here doing the best we can to be transparent and progressively moving forward for this community, or else we wouldn't be sitting at this table. But, you know, there is property around here that is owned by private entities that has been sitting vacant for years. If property developers were interested in that, there's absolutely the ability to contact those real estate brokers or agents that handle that property. And we've not seen the needle move. Our Planning Commission has done everything that we can think of to be as progressive, proactive towards any type of development, whether it be residential or whether it be commercial. And the needle isn't moving for whatever reason. I don't think it's by any fault of what our city staff or our council or our commissions have done. But we can certainly keep this conversation moving forward. And hopefully, we'll be able to find a solution. But, you know, it's a tough one.
One more quick thing.
Yes.
So one of the first things we did when I got on council, it was February six or seven years ago now, LEAP is Lansing Area Economic Initiative. We are paying members to them when we actually don't have to be. Because they are the economic development arm of Ingham County. And to try and get them to be more helpful and to be more, and push more stuff to us, we actually paid them on top of that. And that's one of the things we did five, six years ago to try and get people to bring projects and housing and things here. And we've continued that. And we're not trying to stop any of this. And we've done things to try and move this forward. It's all we can do.
Any other comments?
I guess I got plenty additional. Now, I'm not sure how it'll be taken. You know, with the typical house in Williamson being $300,000, knowing that, you know, new construction homes are significantly more than that. And the majority of people living outside of our district do so because they can't afford to live here in the $300,000 range, including myself. I'm fortunate enough to be here, you know, in an affordable home, which I would take $300,000 if someone was interested. But I'm just curious. You know, when we go to the new construction and we go $300 plus, you know, how many of the School of Choice people does that appeal to in this current market? You know, I think that's probably why we don't have the developers beating on our doors to come in and develop because the market just doesn't support it at this time. You know, once things straighten out, hopefully, they'll come in and knock on the doors and we can put some, you know, get some things rolling and get some additional housing in some areas where it's not being utilized right now. And we'll go from there. I just think it's kind of a sign of the times right now.
And I guess my last final comment would be too is that, you know, I mean, City of Williamson is two miles square. We're pretty landlocked with what could actually be developed within our city boundaries. So when we sit there and say that there are only a certain number of parcels that could be developed, that's no exaggeration. I mean, when those parcels are developed, unless we decide to bulldoze a whole neighborhood and build, you know, high-rise condos like what we have downtown East Lansing or in Frainer area, if those are developed, we're done within the City of Williamson. There's nothing else. So it's really those surrounding townships that I think that unfortunately kind of would have to be that location for those, you know, future developments. And that's not a conversation that we have any, you know, authority over. John?
I'm just going to point out we're 2.6 square miles and your typical township is 36 square miles.
Yep, thank you. I appreciate that. All right. We appreciate you being here. Thank you so much. And this is obviously a conversation that will continue. Yes, Sarah, come right up.
Okay. Sarah Ballter, I'm the Vice President of the School Board. It's good to see everyone. I just wanted to, excuse me, say that going on what Mr. Pat was saying, that we have almost 30% of our students that are School of Choice. That is a staggering amount of students. And School of Choice can go away like that. It's not a given each year. And I love the discussion that is happening. And that's why we, as school board members, are hoping that the city and the townships can get together probably in February to keep this conversation going because there might be members of the township that don't know this information that you're saying or that don't know what we... We want to get everyone together to have this conversation so that we all are on the same page and that we all hopefully make this and continue to make this a priority in our community. Because like Dan said, this is a wonderful community. We all want to see it thrive and grow. And the schools are definitely a part of that. So we just want to make sure that this is a priority and continue to make this better.
30% represents over 400 kids being driven in every day. Sometimes 45 minutes away. So...
And they can go to any district, right? But they continue to come to Williamson and want to come to Williamson for that. And our end-district numbers keep going down, but our School of Choice keep rising. And we can't withstand that. So thank you so much for attending. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks so much for being here. All right, moving on in our discussion items, we have our road diet. So I'm going to turn that right over to our City Manager, John Hanniston, because it's been... We continue to talk about it every council meeting and have for many years, actually.
Yeah, thank you. So as we reported last time, MDOT was, they were seeking additional public comment. And I think that closes on the 13th, which is Thursday, I guess. So they're doing that. I have a meeting with them tomorrow just to kind of get an update on where things stand. 9:30 meeting, it's me and like an army of MDOT people. So I don't have anything more to report than that other than you may have a couple Tuesday night that wish to speak publicly on that.
I would entertain anyone that's here that wanted to come forward regarding the road diet.
Jeff Codett, I think most of you can hear me.
Thanks for being here today, Jeff. And Robin.
Many of the people that are affected in our neck of the woods by this road diet, which is South Putnam Street, couldn't be here, so. And John, I don't know if that's an older meeting tomorrow.
This is a staff update.
Okay. Are they going to have a meeting to let citizens come and talk about that?
I think that's what they're going to tell me tomorrow, but I can let you know after they...
And I don't think anybody's upset about the M-43 portion of it, but it's North and South Putnam. And I don't think that proper thought has been given to what we're actually losing. There are eight parking spaces and downtown is a real priority. And we're losing that all on the west side. If you look at, it's map 19 of the whole conglomeration map. We're losing every parking space across the street from the Hydrostore and Pharmacy and Black Shop. So those businesses there will have nothing. And I can't tell by looking through all the documents if they've given any other thought to where trucks are going to be forced to turn now because you're not going to be able to do it here for the center turn lane. It'll be just like it is in Fowlerville and Perry. You know, at the light, there's not going to be where you move that truck over to the center and somebody's sitting there in the stoplight. 53-foot trailer will not be able to make that turn. So are you going to have an alternate truck route? Has that been discussed? Because it used to be...
That hasn't been discussed.
Okay. Because it won't work. This under and out of it. 53-foot trailer will not be able to work. That's why, because you go to downtown Fowlerville, they have the exact same thing. There's no trailers over 48 feet that can turn there. So there are concerns. I just hope we're not rushing through this thing because MDOT says it's time to do it this spring. We're just going to let them run roughshod over this thing because it's really going to affect the downtime.
So, I mean, we've had the traffic studies that have been done. We've had comments from MDOT. We've had comments from our former city engineer, our former chief of police. I mean, our biggest concern down at that intersection, not only is it the traffic diet coming through on M-43, which obviously is MDOT authority, but, you know, we are trying to make that intersection safer because of our pedestrian walkways. And I'm sure, you know, Chief Weiss can attest to this. Because he was a former council member. He sat at this table when we were discussing road diet. But now in his role as chief, we do have a big concern regarding our pedestrian traffic on all sides, North and South Putnam, M-43 Grand River that goes through there. And so, I mean, while we do have this plan in place, this plan could change for the North and South Putnam side, obviously, because MDOT does not control that. You know, eight spots on that west side, yes. That does affect those businesses directly. But that was a part of our discussion. And we did have, as far as I can remember, our city engineer did speak with those businesses when this plan was being put forward and what that would do for them. Would that be a hardship? I know when we did the parking lot behind your store and on that Zenas area, we actually ended up with additional parking spaces. I mean, I don't know necessarily if... I'm not going to, I'm not saying this to say that it's not important, but eight spaces versus...
I understand from what you're saying. And you're right about the fact we did gain spots. However, I mean, I don't want you to go all the parking issues, right? But if we can get these business owners to enforce parking at the church like they're supposed to, you know, as I've answered on Facebook many times to individuals, then there probably wouldn't be an issue. But we can't seem to make that happen. And I know there's no way you can enforce it. I get that. Or maybe there is, I don't know. Now, I've looked at that plan entirely. And I've seen nothing about a traffic light. So if you're going to make it safer and all your idea is just to put in a turn lane, you're still going to have the same issues. People are running to turn when people are walking unless you put in the green arrow, which is $210,000 addition. And there's not one in the plan. which is $210,000 addition, and there's not one in the plan. So, are we gonna make it safer?
Yep, Dan, I'll let you go ahead and respond to that, because again, that was discussed too.
Look, the whole reason this started was because we want that green turn arrow. This started 10 years ago, asking MDOT for a green arrow. And, oh, the only way we get that green arrow is MDOT says, we have to do this first, and then we can show them we still need green arrow, and then they may actually pay for it. If we don't do this, they will never give us the green arrow.
This is the step one.
This is step one. And none of us went into this, we, you know, there was a debate on social media about a lot of road diet. None of us knew what a road diet was until MDOT told us, hey, you want a left turn lane, or a green arrow, well, we want you to do this road diet. And if you don't do the road diet, we'll never give you that. And you gotta do this first, and then maybe we'll give you that. Kinda where we're at.
When it first came to us, I mean, I'll be honest with everybody here, that when I first saw road diet on paper, I was like, this doesn't make any sense to me, why would we go from four lanes to three? This seems stupid, I'm against this. And then when we saw all the reports, the analysis, the-
Well, you can fix anything with that, and you can explain it, positive or negative.
I mean, life is real, cold hard facts.
And our Fowlerville location is what.
All I'm saying is that when I saw cold hard facts of efficiency, of traffic flow, reduction in accidents, reduction in pedestrian accidents.
Not true.
After seeing all the data reported from other communities that have gone to the road diet, I was, my opinion was changed.
Check with John Tyler in Fowlerville, there's been four pedestrians hit at the light down there just in the past two years.
We probably have more than that.
Does Fowlerville have a left-hand turn lane down in there?
They have road diet just like this, but no arrow. Because they did not, they would not come back and put in the arrow. So, again, I hope we're not going on a false promise here, because you're not gonna fix anything. You're gonna be stuck with the same thing, we're gonna lose parking. And then, we also have the truck turning issue. And you're always looking at me like I'm crazy, but I deal with it every week in Fowlerville.
I guess the question I would have is, you know, as someone who doesn't own a business, who is the truck turning affecting? I mean, for like the city?
Well, you've got, all the restaurants have Gorgons and all their food suppliers and-
And those are all bigger than-
Your laundry suppliers, true, right. Our truck is a 53 footer that comes in there each and every week. There's all kinds of them, and that's something else that's still yet to be discussed. From fixing the back parking lot, we put a loading zone on Middle Street. When there's a large truck parked there, there's been several near missiles down because people can't see the stop sign. And I know it sounds ridiculous, but they go.
So, did Fowlerville change from four lanes to three?
A long time ago, yeah.
How long ago it was?
At least 10 years.
10 years.
And we're not thinking about when there's an accident on 96, where they divert the traffic, which is all size. They divert it right down here.
We talked about that, and MSU games and other-
Cars, cars is not a big deal, the trucks.
Yeah, cars doesn't, yeah, it's the trucks that's gonna be the issue.
Yeah, there's a lot of pieces to consider, we've talked about it.
But they're not in the plan, and that's why it's uncertain. Because if we allow them to go forward with the plan without all of this stuff hammered out and interrating, we're gonna end up just like Fowlerville.
Well, this discussion definitely isn't over. Obviously, we're gonna have that public feedback from MDOT that closes the 13th. John has been, you know, he'll be forthcoming with whatever MDOT shares with us. And again, they don't control that Putnam, we'll have to go back and, you know, make sure that we do our due diligence. And, yes, John?
That's at one of the, North and South Putnam is under jurisdiction of the city. However, the plan as presented and approved, and approved by MDOT, includes the road diet on those streets in current form, because that's the only way to get the turning rate out. And one thing I wanna point out too is, M43 Grand River is under the jurisdiction of MDOT. And there's no insider saying that they don't really wanna do this project, because they wouldn't have gone, they wouldn't, he wouldn't have gotten to this point. I mean, it's much like the turn signal. The council, a decade ago, asked for a turn signal. There wasn't a protracted public input process, there were open houses held by the city. The turn light wasn't put on, 16 months of council meeting agendas, and MDOT said, no. So, if MDOT's gonna say no, they're gonna say no, and then it's, that's it.
Well, Mr. Ryan just said, they said if we do the turn lane, then maybe they'll come back. So, I don't know if that was a part of the conversation, or-
That has been, that has been a part of the conversation.
But they said maybe.
Right now, we're at 100% no. If we don't do this, it's a never.
I think we're in this communication between the turning lane and then the actual light.
Sure, sure, sure.
I get the turning lane.
What it comes down to for me, and I'm a person that, you can make it, you can make a safety argument for anything. But, when, one of our big things up here is we have to trust the people that we hire, that are our staff, to give us good information. And when our former police chief, who had been a state trooper for many years before he was our police chief, came to us over and over and over again, saying, I will not cross as a pedestrian at this stoplight, it's unsafe, I won't do it, and he is the police chief with J-LOCK instead, we had to figure out what to do. And this is, this is the only thing that MDOT will allow us to do. Now, we're having, we're having the discussion, and everybody's feedback is warranted and needed, and we need to hammer out all these details. But, to me, Brandon's baby carriage was hit at that intersection. Our police chief would not cross there. This is all MDOT will let us do. So, I don't wanna be in a position where we go, ah, let's not, we decide not to do this, and then we find, we eventually have a tragedy, and then we go, oh, well, damn, we should've done that.
If we gotta pick between saving lives and saving parking spots, we're gonna save lives.
That's, that's kinda, you know, it doesn't, that's kinda where I'm at.
I get that, I'm not opposed to safety or anything else, so please don't take it.
No, no, I get it, and I understand your frustration.
But then, please put the whole plan together. You know, come up with a truck turning plan. So, a 48-foot truck can make a turn there, because right now, the way traffic sits, when you move this one over here to the middle, you can't turn truck there. And we haven't thought about, you're talking about safety, so what about the person sitting here that gets crushed by a truck? So, let's go off of your plan of safety, but let's do the whole plan, can we?
That's great feedback, I greatly appreciate that, I didn't-
I think John's right, it's over now.
Well, Dan and I talked and discussed this last week, so I'm surprised it's still an unknown issue. So, alright, well, that's it for me.
Thank you so much, thanks for being here, Jeff, I appreciate it. Any other comments on road diet? Alright, going on to our next discussion item, construction project updates. John, where are we at with Putnam?
I wanna introduce Stowus Moreland from Spicer. He's the lead chief for Spicer, he's been more involved in the projects the last six months or so, will help us with the projects we have forthcoming. We had our kickoff meeting, or pre-count meeting last week for, with KNR Construction, who's doing the paving portion, the final paving, curb and gutter for North Putnam. That was a very good meeting, anticipate a start date for now, it's a couple weeks ago. We're in the last stages of Phase 1 with that project. If you've driven down there, a couple of changes, the paving is mostly done. There's still maybe a couple of spots that they have to come back and rectify to get us through the winter. Phil, can you give me an update, it's okay if you don't have it. I was told sometime this week for barricades was moving, I don't know if that's changed at all, or-
Last I'd heard, yeah, that's still the plan, they gotta finish up a couple of those paving spots. The other contractor will be in here, because they have to have the stumps out by a certain date in December. So, they'll be in here, they're probably looking at just temporary traffic control for the day.
They've already been grounded.
Those, yeah, they're done, they've ground them out, they just need to come back and do kinda the final. Yep, so, so that's that. And then, once Iron Horse is done there, our next meeting with Spicer, we'll discuss the tentative schedules for Williamson and Light Street, which will start next spring.
Alright, excellent.
And yeah, one last thing is, we are talking about with the third phase of the federal allocation that we got for water veins, talking about the right and rational time to do that. From a contracting perspective, we're hopeful that we can do just a contract amendment with one of the contractors that we have already under contract, which will save us some time on bidding, should save us some dollars as well. And we'll also, you know, expedite that schedule. And that would be the water vein that basically runs east-west along the alley to North Putnam, and then the Red Seer, the crossing.
Alright, great. Any questions regarding Putnam construction update?
I'll just give a comment since one of the big bosses here. If, so I live on Putnam, so I've been living through the construction. I just wanna give a shout out to your folks and more to the Iron Horse, they've been phenomenal the entire time. They're a great crew, they could bid on every product we have, I love it. They've been very understanding every time that we have to get in and out, even though if there's traffic, they're willing to help us, they, you know, my wife was trying to back out, and they like guided her throughout the entire construction site, so they're a phenomenal crew, they're great. So, when you see them, please give them my kudos, they're an awesome crew.
Thank you, I will pass that on for sure.
Excellent, has Harvey got a t-shirt?
No, he has not got a t-shirt yet, but he's gotten to ride on an excavator, a steamroller, and a front loader, so. Yeah, so he's living the dream. Yeah, so he's loving life, and he's been watching all the construction.
Alright, well, that concludes our discussion items list. For correspondence received, we did not have any. Department had reports, I'm just gonna hop right back over here to John.
Just to be very brief, the McCormick Park Pavilion, the concrete, they had it set up. I don't know if they got to it today, but that should be done, so that's great. That project will be wrapped up. We've really been fortunate with the weather, which looks like it's gonna continue for the next couple of weeks. This is our last council meeting of the year. I believe all of our boards and committees have also taken the rest of the month off, which I think is a good thing. We've got a lot of work to do in the coming years. Thank City Council and the community for another successful year here in Williamson. And I always feel like the best is, we're doing great, but the best is you get to come here, so thank you.
Yeah, just a few things. On December 2nd, the stuff cop car was successful. They took in nine-plus carloads of food from the food bank, and over $2,400 in cash and checks for the food bank. We served up, well, my wife served up 300 cups of hot chocolate, and we gave around away just as many, the glow bracelets. Shock with a Hero was great, last Tuesday with Austin Pealog and myself. John actually was assigned a kid from Williamson Schools, and Channel 6 covered that, so that was great. Though I wasn't able to participate playing with the Harlem Wizards due to back surgery, I supported Nisa, our Nisa partners out there, Mike Hens and Don Dren, as they played their other staff in Nisa. And I cheered them on, and that's all I have.
Alright, great, well, thanks so much. Stacking, how's that going?
Stacking's going well. Sarah Sadler's in her sixth week into the academy, so she's a little more than 25% through. And Marcus Madrono's set to start January 3rd.
Perfect, fantastic, thank you so much. And tell Mrs. Chief that the hot couple is good.
I will tell her.
Alright, and we do have our treasurer's report in here. If anybody has any questions regarding our finances, please reach out to either Tom or to John with those questions, and those will be answered. We do have our Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering reporting here for new permits issued, so it's good to see that even though we're coming into the end of the year, there are still residents and businesses that are working on their properties. If you have any questions regarding that, you can certainly reach out to John, and he'll get those answers from Livingston County for us. Committee, subcommittee reports, last meetings that you've attended for this year, anyone? No? Alright. Audience participation, we have another opportunity to come forward. Is there anybody that would like to come forward at this time? Alright, council member comments, I'm gonna go around the table, start with Tom?
No, definitely, thank you.
Alright, Brandon?
No.
Scott?
I don't know, sir.
Alright, Dan?
I'm good, I see you.
Alright. Well, I just wanna thank everybody for a very exciting calendar year, getting through our projects at Putnam Street, our residents that live in that area. As far as school traffic, you know, I think it went flawlessly from the start of construction up until their end, so I hope that that continues, those habits that are formed. I don't really feel like we had any feedback, negative feedback for that. Looking forward to this next year with this council. I'm looking forward to everything else that we've got on our list of to-dos to keep moving this community forward. Just a reminder, you know, even though we're experiencing warm weather, there is still low parking between 2:00 and 5:00 a.m. on our city streets, just because you never know what Pyramid Michigan, Mother Nature is going to do. Hopefully, we will have a white Christmas. I wanna thank everybody that participated during our annual light parade, from the events that the Chamber of Commerce put on, the amazing parade that we had downtown with our float participants. All of our businesses have participated in the cookie crawl, which I believe was a success because there were 17 cookies that were absolutely delicious. So, I know that, we'll be back next year for sure. And just, I wanna wish everybody just a wonderful holiday season, that you, your family are safe and healthy, and if you travel, be safe. And we will resume all these great discussions in January, on January 8th. So, I will go ahead and call it adjourned at 8:01.